Three, please rise to the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. This afternoon, we have to appoint a vice president. At the last meeting, nomination was for Heather Welch. And since Heather has respectfully declined the nomination, am I correct, Heather?
That is correct. I appreciate the nomination, for sure. A lot of stuff going on at work. I've taken a lead on a big initiative this year at work, so certainly, you know, appreciate the nomination, but would like to decline for the year.
So with that being said, we'll open up the floor for nomination for vice president. Okay?
You'd like to nominate Tom Miller?
I second.
Second, second by two. Is there any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations. And Tom Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Phil Carey, congratulations, Tom. And I guess Lisa will give you the oath.
All right, congratulations, Tom. As I stand, would you put a little bit to the center here so the camera can see you? Raise your right hand and just repeat after me. I, Tom Miller.
Aye, Tom.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability.
The duties of the position of school board vice president.
Duties of school board vice president.
For the Highland Central School District.
For the Highland Central School District.
For which I'm now assigned for the term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. I have this June, July 1st, but you might want to state it as today's date, July 26th.
July 1st?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Today's date.
Twenty to twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, sorry, yes.
Twenty-seven.
To June 30th, 2021.
Twenty-one.
Right, thank you, Tom Miller.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we'll have your special presentation. I believe Sarah and Tom are going to present our reopening plan for the 2020 school year. And we may have several options, so we'll go through those.
Yes. So again, this is a reminder for the board and for the public. The governor has passed all school districts in New York State to give several options to a portal. After a lot of deliberation, you know, working with and getting advisement from other districts, and really, everyone has a little bit different plan. In order to meet the guidelines, the key is that really, in order to meet the guidelines of the governor as far as six feet, you can't have all students at the same time. It's basically a 50%. So then we look at, well, what's the best for kids? What's the best for parents and guardians? And so no matter what plan you propose, and there are other ways to do this, because there are other districts doing slightly different, but at the end of the day, it is, it's going to create issues as far as childcare for, you know, parents and guardians with younger children. It absolutely will, but you just cannot bring everyone at the same time. So there will be, no matter what plan you do, there's going to be some people who are going to be, you know, have to make arrangements somehow. So these plans are fairly, you know, rock solid. There is some flexibility, certainly, in some of the options. So option, you know, option A and option B. Now, these are on our district website on a Survey Monkey. We have received about 700 responses so far. I did send out another call today because something happened and not all the calls were sent on Friday, even though I did get some calls from some people saying, oh, I got your call. And so I resent it, but with social media, certainly, we have a lot of responses. So the option A, first, we thought, how can we get, kids got to get into school. And how can we get kids, is there any way to get kids in school every day? So the only way you could get every kid in every day would be, you know, for lack of a better term, a split session. Because we own our own buses and we have control over that, you know, theoretically, we could, with our current buses, get every kid in every day. Now, that means a few things. One, it means that, yes, you would have a kindergarten on this bus with potentially a senior, which many schools do, some schools do already, but you would have a big mix of students. We were anticipating there would be a larger number of parents driving also, so that would lighten up. So remember, we only have to bus half the students. And if about 20% of parents decided to drive, that would make it even less. So we have the ability to bus them around twice. Now, when we say you'd have two cohorts, that the asterix next to the A to L, M to Z, that's for kind of demonstration purposes. Certainly, we're going to look at exactly what the numbers are to get it about 50/50. It might be, you know, A to K, and, you know, understand, it might not be A to L, but I don't want people to get hung up on that. But we would split it as close to 50/50 as possible. But the idea, because that way siblings would be on the same bus runs. So that would make it a little easier for transportation, because people from the same house can sit in the same bus seat. And then everyone else has to be in single seats. So you'd have one day from 8:00 to 10:30, and then the second half from 12:30 to 3:00. So every student would have that in-person instruction and then some at-home work. You know, the schools themselves would all have slightly different schedules. You know, the elementary, remember, you know, they had the same students all day long, and so Mr. Freer and Mr. Darling kind of worked it out. But their schedule would be pretty similar to what it is, just, you know, in shorter time periods. Where the high school and the middle school would have a rotating schedule, because really, you need to get into all the specials, all the requirements. And this way, for the eventual time that we come back to regular school, you know, all that can be rolled into, back into seamlessly, into the regular schedule. As far as, we also have to feed the students, of course. So as you can see, if this was the option, cohort one, 8:00 to 10:30, they would get breakfast and lunch, would be possibly be a grab and go. And then the cohort two, you get lunch and then breakfast for the next day. Because we do have to provide food to the students during any of these scenarios. Now, for kids, in my opinion, you know, this is, I like this better, because the kid's in every day, you see their teacher every day. For a parent, though, this option might be a little tougher, because then every parent's going to need some sort of childcare, whether you're cohort one or cohort two. If you're cohort one, you're fine in the morning, they're going to be leaving, but they're going to be back home by 11:00 or 11:30. And then, so you need someone for the second half of the day. And the cohort two parents are going to need someone in the first half of the day. So it is tricky. Do you have any other comments about that option A?
No, I think this one is a little bit more problematic as far as the food service. Well, no, actually, this one with the food service would be a little bit better, because we, again, we'd be seeing them every day. You know, transportation could potentially be a little bit more of a thing, because we really would need to have about a half an hour before 8:00 where students are being dropped off, because they'll be dropped, you know, each bus will go to three buildings, because we have everyone on the same bus. So there is supervision issues that we have with that, both before and with dismissal of school on that one. But what that gap of time in the middle of the day allows us to do is to do a cleaning between cohorts of students, so that, you know, we can go through the building, wipe down desks, wipe down bathrooms, all that kind of thing, in between those two groups of students. And again, you know, as far as students seeing a teacher every single day, this is obviously the best option there. It is a shortened period of time. Middle school and high school, they wouldn't see every one of their teachers every day. It would rotate through. And we did, we definitely will be able to cohort our elementary school students. Looks like our middle school students, either option, will be able to cohort for the most parts, meaning one group of students will stay in one classroom for the full day, and teachers will rotate in and out of the classroom, so you keep those groups of students together as much as possible, so that if there is an outbreak, you know, it's an isolated group of people that have been exposed as the whole.
I'm just curious, what would the actual academic contact time be in this scenario? And then also, you mentioned the half hour of receiving the students. That narrows you down to an hour.
It's before that time. This is the critical thing.
But between, if they're coming in at 12:00, we now have only an hour to clean an entire building.
Yes.
That seems.
Yes, it's, you know, it's, it's that, you know, not everyone.
And then they're going to be stragging, going out, and then they want them to come in early. You reduce that time, it just seems awful tight. But at the academic contact time, I was curious about.
The contact time is 8:00 to 10:30.
But so we're in subject areas, or there's not simply one subject, there's a stretch of seven to nine subjects.
Two or three minutes for teachers to switch classes.
About three-minute passing, so you'd get about, high school, you'd get four different subjects in.
I think that's what we would be dropping out.
Two and a half hours you're going to get four, it just seems.
No, it definitely would be tight.
I know you're working with the positive situation, but I just, it just seems like the contact time here is less beneficial academically than, but I'll let you finish, I'm sorry.
Okay. Come on, what do you have?
Okay, so the scheduling, you mentioned a rolling schedule. So with an A/B schedule, we have the middle school and high school, would that be, you know, one through nine, A-Day, and then next year going to B-Day? How does that come out work?
Actually, we're looking at not even, you, it would be, what they've talked about doing, would be like on the first day, A-Day, might be most of the math classes on that day, but the next day might be most of the social stuff. You know, just it kind of depends on what the schedule would be. But we, yeah, we would try to, or we would set it up, so that the students would have their whole, either nine periods at the middle school or eight periods at the high school. But I do think it would, it will limit some of their choices, no matter what. You know, it could be that not all electives will be open to all students, because if we're trying to cohort, you know, we might be saying, well, freshmen, these are your electives that you can choose from, but, you know, we got to dig into that. You know, we don't want to dig too much into it until we really have the schedule, so that, you know, we're not spending a lot of time doing all of that.
Sarah, how about special area, gym, music, art?
So at the elementary school, and this is true for both schedules, the special area teacher will be pushing into the classroom as much as possible. The guidance asks us to take PE outside, because to do actual PE work, there needs to be 12 feet of spacing rather than six feet. So, you know, as long as the weather is appropriate, we'll be taking the students outside for PE. But again, that would be just that small cohort outside. If it can't be outside, we'll probably go to the gym areas. But we need to look at how we can figure that out a little bit more. Or we might do things in the classroom in some way. But we've already, you know, I've met with both the art department and the music department, and we're looking at ways that they can do art on a cart, or music on a cart, and, you know, we're not sharing stuff and all of that.
Same thing with special ed students, specialty classrooms?
You mean like self-contained special ed, or?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, and, yeah, so like for other services, maybe? Is that more kind of the pull-up, like speech or OTPT? Some of that will actually be pulled out, probably. So they would miss some instructional time, much like they do already, or that kind of thing.
You just go back, you mentioned also about this supervision before and after, so what's the contractual for the teaching day?
So what we would, right now, this kind, the teacher technically would be from 8:00 to 3:00. We'll need to flex some of the support staff's time, because the arrival will be between 7:30 and 7:50, 7:55. And then the departure will be between 3:00 and 3:30. So there'll be people, you know, who, or maybe even teachers also, who might have a flex, who might have to flex their time one way or the other, just so we have supervision when they're arriving and departing. And I'm also, you know, there's a lot of contractual concerns with any of these plans. I'm sure you've been working through them also. I am, you know, I'm also confident, I can say, that people are going to step up and do the right thing. But we will have to flex some people's schedules. And as far as for either of these plans, and we're probably going to be coming back, there might also have to be some part-time, you know, people hired, as far as, once you really narrow it down for, you know, bathroom supervision, because you can only have one student in the bathroom at a time. And we have to be someone there, so, you know, okay, you can go in, you wait, but we might not have all the staffing for that. So that's, so option A, again, this is up on the portal, up on the website. This has about, at the last time we checked, you know, it was about 37% of the families preferred this option. And then option B is like, is an A/B schedule. And this, again, there's flexibility as far as which day is the A/B. This is, we'll make that final determination, but basically, an A/B means students are in either one of two cohorts, on the same criteria, A through L, M through Z, with flexibility, but they would come to school two days, and there'd be one day where it's all remote. So for demonstration purposes, so if you're in cohort one, you would go to school in person on Monday and Tuesday. Cohort two would go Thursday and Friday. Wednesday would be all remote, where we, where we see teachers would kind of be working with small groups with older students, doing check-ins. The days they don't have school, they'll have assignments to do. And that is also the day, you know, and we have no control of this, that BOSI CTE students attend BOSIs just on Wednesdays, so.
So that's just our high school students who participate in some week, okay? But it's also a little bit longer day than they normally would have, and so it doesn't really fit as well into our schedule as it previously did, either. So that allows them to go do that without missing things here.
So as far as the high school, middle school, we still need to build in time for checking on, for the students who aren't in that day and/or students who are all virtual. So the plan is, at these high schools, most of them have a normal start time, but it would have, they'd be releasing earlier than normal. They would take about four minutes off of their period, but so they would still have long, fairly long periods, about 38 to 42 minutes a period. The elementary, so that then gives the high school, middle school teachers the 45 minutes at the end of the day to check on the students and touch base with the students who are home. The elementary students would arrive an hour later than normal, but then dismiss at normal time. And then those elementary teachers would check in with the students who aren't in that day, so the opposite-day students. It does allow time to sanitize the bus runs. And again, we're doing that check-in at home. I talked about the Wednesday, it would be the smaller discussion, a deeper cleaning. And then again, food service, you do have to work in food service, so you'd have normal breakfast and lunch on the in-person days, and then an apostle pickup for those students who are home, because you do still need to feed all students, whether they're virtual or at school.
So this one has more votes right now on our poll, but it's not significantly more like it. It was about 37 to about 48 or something, you know, like it wasn't, it wasn't like it really went one way or the other. I think lots of people can see, you know, benefits in each model.
I've got to, I like this one better. I'm picturing, if I'm a cohort two student, and I'm on my virtual time, would I still be able to tune in to Monday's live class virtually?
We have to look at that. There's a possibility, although kind of the picture that we are working on right now would be, the in-class time would be similar for cohort one and for cohort two, so it would be kind of the same material, but yes, there's a possibility. We have to make sure of that.
That would be, that would really be great, you know?
Yeah, or even.
Classes can be outfitted that way.
Yeah, we just have to make sure we have everything we need in each class to do that. And, you know, like any of this bandwidth becomes something for not only in our building, but also for the families at home too. But we are looking at that option.
To me, this one has clear advantages from a health perspective, because you don't have a cross-contamination of cohorts. You don't have an interplay between the two communities going back and forth at the same day. You're allowed for deeper cleaning. So if there is an outbreak, it's going to occur within a clear delineation. And to me, it's far safer, just in terms of, I, just to throw this out there, just not to scare everybody anymore, but aside from asymptomatic progression, there's, the allergologist was talking about significant transfer. It also comes from pre-symptomatic people. And pre-symptomatic people, it occurs between the third and fifth day of infection, where you're not actually showing symptoms, but you're actually, that's your highest level of contagion is during the pre-symptomatic phase. So we'll have that to contend with too. So the more we can keep the populations isolated and reduced, I think, is a significant benefit health-wise. And then academically, I know it has, it rings similar to block scheduling, but I think the academic contact time in block scheduling is far more meaningful than that, you know, rush in, everybody, you know, it takes 10 minutes for the students to settle down between periods, and then 10 minutes to get going. So this seems to me, there's a stronger academic contact time. But that's just my two cents, so.
Yeah, I kind of agree with, like, legitimately, this is better for safety, but I just started this academically, I like the first plan. I feel like their everyday, I'm concerned like for three days, their kids at home and like that instructional, like, that's like, so I guess I'm just curious, what the expectations would be in that, it's this environment, the three days the kids are at home. How much time would they expect to be online, you know, based on their grade levels? But for me, that's kind of my, why I don't like this plan, because I just think constructionally, it may not get us, you know, get us where we want.
I think one variation on this plan, too, that maybe we can talk about a little bit more between now and like tomorrow, would be alternating these days. So cohort one would be Monday, cohort two would be Tuesday, still up on Wednesday, cohort one on Thursday, cohort two on Friday. So that doesn't fully answer that, but at least you don't have five days between instructional contact.
And you could still do a deep clean at the end of the school.
And you could still do a deep plan at the end of the day, plus we still have Wednesday to even, you know, do more if we felt like we needed to, you know.
We'll be flexing, you know, we're not going to, I don't anticipate us necessarily need, we're going to rethink the custodial schedule. I don't see the need to have people here till 11:00. I see us changing some people's times, so that in every building, you literally have people whose job is you're walking around with towels and spray, and you're just constantly wiping down, because everything is going to need to be wiped constantly. The door handles, the light switches, you know, so we'll have an extra cleaning during the day.
And so a little bit of time, there are, some districts are putting shields on desks. I don't even know how they find.
Not individual student desks, but we are looking at shields for office spaces, as well as for some of our support personnel, so like speech or OTPT, places where it's harder with the mask to be able to do the work, to have a shield in between, so they can take the mask off and interact differently, music or band instruction, same thing, to try and do some of that there. You know, a lot of that right now, though, is very dependent on us getting the materials, as many materials as we need, that's a factor.
Sarah, with option B, would we be able to flex that schedule somewhat because of traditional vacation days? Like, I mean, I'm looking at, say, Thanksgiving.
Oh, right.
Thursday and Friday were off, so cohort two would lose two days to the rest of the cohorts. Or if there's a number of, say, Friday days off, you know, a coming holiday or, or Monday, but I think, yes, would we be able to flex? Or would you be able to put a schedule out for the first?
We would put special.
The rest of this school, the rest of this year, and start again in January.
Right. Yeah, I think we have to.
I always think you would have to do. Monday gets hit pretty hard.
Yeah, Mondays are.
And balance the day, like, because Monday's always a tough day.
Yeah. Tom, whatever decision we make, realistically, something could change after the first quarter or at the mid-year point, where it's okay to go back to life as normal.
Right.
But we would have to basically sign up for a defined block of time, 10 weeks, 20 weeks, what, you know, for this, to make it worthwhile to run that way.
I would say option B is the easiest one to transmit, transition very quickly from this to a normal, everyday schedule, because there's not as much reorganizing within the schedule that has to happen here. Option A, we have to probably redo the entire.
Option B has half the bus runs, right? You're running twice the bus runs, right?
Yeah, after you run twice, well, this is the regular bus runs, this would have the kids on it.
And they wouldn't run on Fridays, except for our district and our CTE folks.
Economically, there's savings there as well as a chance for accidents and.
Option A, you also run it probably snow days or delayed opens.
Sure.
You know, where.
Yeah, that's going to hit the problem that Alan was talking about.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Yep, yeah, same, same.
Well, that being said, if you build in the flexibility for a remote learning day in place of, you know, if it's a holiday or something like that, you can shift and fill in.
That Wednesday, we can usually do the in-person day.
Right. Allow that to be your flexibility and your keel.
Sarah, just playing all types of scenarios. What if, an option B, that the majority of the cohort two parents are not driving students in because of that alphabet separation? Would that overwhelm our bus routes and overcrowd buses and not maintain it possibly? I mean, would we be able to, at some point in time, get a commitment from parents of?
We talked about that with.
I don't think you could have parents saying, all right, on Monday and Wednesday, I'm going to drive, and on Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm not driving, like, I mean, that's going to be very challenging.
You know, I think there'll be a certain amount of that, but it's very clear in the 145-page guidance document and the Department of Health document, like, all of those, because you're trying to keep cohorts together, that, yeah, you can't be switching buses randomly, or you can't call in in the middle of the day and say, oh, they're going to go home with so-and-so. I mean, it will be.
It's a challenging year, and they got to be able to.
Yeah, now, this is, these will be your runs. You know, if we have custody issues, we'll probably need to work around that for some. But again, if we can set that at the beginning of the year, then, okay, we know on Tuesdays, Alan Marone goes here, and on Wednesdays or Thursdays, he goes there, that's fine. But, yeah, no, we've really talked about, you know, having like a two-week notice. If you want to change what you've got, you have to give us a good chunk of time to make that arrangement, so that we're not scrambling at any point in time.
We need to get next Tuesday. And if the governor makes the announcement on Thursday, obviously, we're going to have to, unless we're going to make a decision.
We have to make, we have to submit our plan by Friday.
So where do we submit?
This plan, so.
So you're submitting this plan.
Well, we have to choose either A.
Oh, we do, all right.
But I did, there's one more slide, just to go through.
Okay, so we have to make a decision.
For remote learning, so there's two situations that this could happen. Remote learning could be with option A or B, and then those students who are medically compromised or live with someone who's medically compromised. We don't have a lot of very clear direction from the state about exactly what that means or who that can be, but those students may be all remote, even under the A and B plan. So we have to provide remote instruction for them. And then there's also the possibility that when Governor Cuomo makes his announcement sometime between August 1st and August 7th, that he's going to say, we're all remote. We're not able, you're not able to bring students into school at all. I mean, the way the numbers are in New York right now, I don't think that's going to be the choice, but, you know, it's hard, you know, hard now.
September, October, it could happen.
And then again, yes, it could be, and actually, all of these, whatever we choose, if we have an outbreak in Ulster County or in Highland, it could mean that we're shut down for a week or two weeks or some period of time. And that's all part of the document that we submit to the state. So remote learning, though, what we're looking at, because we also are going to have some staff who will not. staff who will not be able to return because of their own medical things. Um, our hope is that those teachers will become the remote instruction teachers so that you don't have classroom teachers who are also trying to teach the students who are all remote. Um, so that will be set up as a remote instruction program. It will look probably very different from the program in the classroom, I mean, it'll be the same standards and content, um, but there definitely will be some in-person contact at some point during each day. Um, you know, we might have some teachers that will be teaching either more than one grade level or more than one, um, subject within their certification as part of that. So for instance, depending, just because depending on the numbers, you know, we might have, um, we might have 10 first graders, but only two second graders who are home. So the, you know, remote instruction teacher would probably have those 12 students at the same time and they would be, you know, teaching them. Or, you know, the social studies teacher might be teaching US History VII and Global IX. Um, but again, that's all gonna be dependent on as the numbers kind of play out and we figure out who's really coming to school and who's not. You know, we won't really know that until we introduce this plan, so.
Would, would state, would state relax testing, like Kennedy, um?
At the moment, they are not committing to that, they're sitting there testing.
And that's all federally connected. It's really not a New York State choice, it's a federal choice, so it's, uh, right now, everything we're hearing is saying, no, probably there will not be the relaxation of testing.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be told to the ministry.
Yeah. It's a long time away, the way things are going tomorrow doesn't look the same, so, you know, right now.
Ideally, we're not in that scenario when those come out.
Ideally, but we'll have been in that scenario for quite a chunk of the year, probably.
We've adapted a little.
So, you know, that impacts.
So when you have the all remote learning, that's for only the individuals who are defined in that? It's not me as a parent saying, I choose?
Well.
I believe parents, the guidance kind of, because if you choose to keep your child home, you can keep your child home.
So the guidance is saying we have to provide that?
The guidance is.
Oh, we have to provide education to them. If you choose to keep your child home and be all virtual, it's not the same as homeschooling. Homeschooling is your duty, taking all responsibility. This is if a parent decides, I am not sending my child in, I, because they're worried, admittedly, they can keep their child home, then we can provide all virtual.
So is that within the guidance or is it only if it's a medical issue that that?
The guidance is the issue.
The district has to.
Yeah, the guidance is very unclear, so a parent could easily say, I'm not comfortable sending my child in and they don't have to send the child in.
And did you have, what was the percentage response for all remote?
Uh, 15 percent, and then the most recent one, it's, uh, this morning when we got the, our, looked at the results, it's about 15 percent. Which is about where, you know, when we did the survey right at the end of the school year, it was a little closer to 20. So we just, we haven't given an update until, like, the end of the day, so we'll see more in our morning, but 15 to 20 seems to be pretty, um, pretty much how it's playing out across the county.
Mm-hmm. Camila?
I have two, two, two more questions.
Yeah, sure.
Just curious, like, the cleaning time for, um, because I know, like, my building, I asked the custodial staff, like, what it's like, you know, the time now when there's no one in here. But just now that you have kids touching, they touch everything, to just kind of.
Sorry, I just, I can hear the beginning.
Oh, just estimate the cleaning time.
Clean, estimate the cleaning time.
Um, no, we haven't really talked about it specifically on that time.
Would there also be a training for the cleaning staff?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the guidance. There's training for everybody on every, I mean, we're gonna be doing training on how to wear face coverings, how to sneeze in your arm.
No matter which part we do, wherever we end up, presuming we are on some sort of split schedule that we're not just back, um, very likely, you know, we'll have to, at a board meeting, we'll alter the calendar a little bit and we'll probably have more, if not all of our superintendent conference days, like, at least September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, just have all four superintendent conference days because the amount of training for all the faculty and staff, it's gonna take a long time. And then when students start, which would be the Tuesday, the 8th, I believe.
Yeah, student start, start time wouldn't change.
Student start time doesn't change, but the superintendent conference days would. Uh, in that first, you know, that first week, that's gonna be a lot of, a little less academics and a lot of training for students of all the procedures, everything, the hand washing and, you know, masks. And, you know, you can imagine that, you know, think of a hot week at, you know, but you have kindergartens, first graders that have to learn to keep their mask on all day long. That's a, that's a lot, that's a lot.
We do have to schedule, the guidance, we have to schedule mask breaks in, during the day, so, um, that, that's part of it. But, yeah, so that first week, we're really gonna emphasize creating community, again, just in case we have to close down so that there's, there's some sense of, um, relationships and community before, before we shut down, but then also, you know, how do you CSO, how do you Schoology, all the PPE kinds of training that we need to, plus with our staff, we still need to do all the normal yearly mandated trainings too, so.
Option, option B, um, as we know, we have students that are, um, have psychological issues, emotional issues, where if they're not, hopefully they're in school every day in the old scenario, but in this scenario here, that puts some of those students out of touch with the teaching staff, support staff, um, any of the, um, psychological services we, we offer and, um, you know, there's gaps here.
There's gaps in any, any plan that we come up with, there's gaps.
Have a, have a two to four-day gap, depending on how it cycles with the weekend, of when they're gonna get, see those people, if they need to. And then they're not in a classroom where a teacher every day sees them and can, you know, uh, identify something or as it's brewing, so there's gonna be huge gaps where, um.
Sure, I mean, the students who have, you know, the, you know, the.
Really sad situation.
Yes, well, the counseling in their IEPs, they're gonna get that counseling, whether it's live or virtual, which is what we did, you know, uh, this past spring, but I agree, it's not gonna look the same. I can sit here and say, oh, yeah.
Physical, physical abuse situation and stuff like that, where they don't have somebody seeing them every day and can't, you know, now you're gonna sexualize, well, last time it was almost four days ago.
Right.
Some of that work can be removed out too. You know, they could be doing some of those sessions on the days that the students are at home versus in class, so that they're doing, you know, video classes.
Sarah, has staff leadership weighed in on either option A or B? Is there any feedback?
They, they have, uh, you know, they're leaning towards B. Yeah. They're leaning towards B, just because, um, mostly because there is a lot of, I hate to.
There's a lot of logistics.
There's a lot of logistics and contractual issues with option A, that you really, you know, have to come up with a lot of MOAs, um, because I hate to say that, you know, they are gonna step up, but that, within reason, and they still have.
Of course.
Yeah.
I mean, um, option A, especially when it comes to after-school activities.
There's pretty much not gonna be after-school activities for the most part.
We're not gonna have, okay.
You know, we, I think we're still, we're talking about this today, and again, that's part of the plan we submit, but we're going to look at extracurriculars and make them as virtual as possible, so a lot of clubs and things, because we need to have those things to create the community. If, if we lose a lot of that, we're gonna lose kids, more than we maybe are anyway.
Are we assuming then we're not gonna have scholastic, scholastic, uh, sport seasons?
Well, right now, it's been pushed off till September 21st, but around the town, I mean.
And I'm just saying, as this progresses through the year, we get beyond, we get beyond that first 10 weeks, then it goes into the next 20 weeks, not happy year, you know, and.
I would say that probably, you know, uh, some clubs, it's a little easier to do than others, but, you know, you really don't want a lot of people staying after school too much because we, we have to get the cleaning done. So as much as possible, it's gonna be virtual clubs.
I think they actually, the teachers, they did that during this past, and I think it's a really interesting new clubs performing.
I'm not sure if sports, I'm on the executive committee for our section, uh, you know, they're all holding, they're grasping to, to have sports, but I don't, I'm not sure how you.
Or any, or like you said, um, you know, any after-school activity.
Oh, I know. Yeah. Um, again, with any of these, you know, again, big guidance on this, you know, it does talk about for any of these situations, no matter what it is, if there's an outbreak, then what do you do, or if someone tests positive, you suspect them, you know, so that gets very tricky because the guidance talks, I just wanna put that out there, because the guidance talks about, well, you're cohorting, so you can just shut that classroom down. But in people's perception, that, you know, as, as the superintendent, I would say, yeah, no, no, that's, you know, I'm not gonna support that and you can, you know, we're gonna have to close down for, you know, at least 24 hours or, or until that student gets their test results back.
Contact tracing.
Because this, it, it's very tricky, you know, the guidance, again, just says, if you have a class of 10 kids and one of the kids maybe was exposed, just close that class down. I don't see parents or guardians buying that.
Nor should they.
You know, you know, so there's a lot, that's why there's so many variables that we have no control over, that it's also a tough decision for the governor, it might just be.
And barring medical intervention.
He maybe should just say, you know what, we're gonna take the month of September, be all virtual, and then we're gonna revisit this.
And most models show a huge potential for resurgence in the fall, so, yeah, I don't, I don't envy your positions, that's, uh.
Cohorts are cohorts, but when you have kids that initially, I mean, scheduling changes that happen in a normal school year are huge when kids don't get along and there's issues and then they try to separate the kids, change schedules, a lot of this is, makes that almost not possible.
You can't change, yeah.
And at the high school, they might want to.
But you're still gonna have bad interactions with students.
We can do it pretty easily K through eight, but high school's gonna be harder.
Yeah, it's, wow.
For the all-remote learning option, are we gonna have a deadline for, or a commitment date for parents? Because I just get worried about the staff and in terms of, I mean, I encourage just making sure that that, you know, guidance makes sure that we, because offering so many different options, I think stretches us even further, you know? And I understand everybody needs an education, but that's the reason why some people decide to homeschool, right? Because they don't agree with what the school's doing. So to the extent that, I don't know, just, my, my advice is just making sure that we have to offer that. I don't know, obviously, there's a population that desires it, but.
You're running into a legal issue with HIPAA because you can't ask, you know, what's the medical condition that you consider to be dangerous for your child because it's not something we can ask?
Right, but if the guidance is saying that it's medically, then how do you deal?
What are the possibilities of that?
If you have to ask, just.
If you're high risk.
You have to.
Right, if you're high risk, yeah. And it just seems like the more options we give, the, the further we're gonna stretch and try to figure out how things.
Yeah, kinda in my head with that is I'm really thinking we submit our plan, the governor makes some decision, hopefully sooner rather than later, and at that point, we'll get more definite commitments on transportation, on whether you're coming into school, from our staff, about whether, you know, what their medical situation is. So, you know, by hopefully the second week in August, and I, I mean, that seems ridiculous because then it's only the fourth week in August, we're really kinda back to school essentially, but, um, you know, that's the point where it'll really be like, no, you need to decide one way or the other. We'll have a better idea.
Yeah, the clock will start on which one you're doing home or you're gonna come to school once the governor makes his, makes his announcement.
I know, you know, I, I have family all over the country who teaches, so, um, there are lots of schools that are already making decisions to go all remote. Um, some places are going all remote just to start, again, September, October with that idea, but I, in New York, you don't, it doesn't seem like you really have the decision as a district to say it's all gonna be remote.
I know Virginia's doing, uh, first 10 weeks remote and then they're gonna decide after.
Yeah, so, we'll see.
How do you evaluate a new teacher when they're put into this mix?
No, it's gonna be evaluation, it's gonna be difficult, uh, but, you know, you're, you're still, because all the ADRs still all in effect, so it'll still be all done the same way. I mean, they'll be, there's still gonna be teaching, it's just gonna be a little different because they're just doing a, you know.
Right, in some ways, you know, there's, there are silver linings in some of this too. I mean, the teachers are going to be able to work with half of their class at a time. So, you know, they're gonna have nine to 12 kids at one point in time, so it could be, you know, you're gonna be able to move kids further because you have this smaller group at one time, or, um, you know, and maybe you have the ability to do more, be more creative because you're not managing 25 students, you're managing 10 to 12 at a time. So, you know, there's, there's definitely things in here that could be great too.
Yeah.
But it just, it doesn't feel that way because, you know, there's just so many factors. And of course, over, you know, overall of it is that it's a very serious disease.
There's, there's many different options out there, but at the end of the day, these were the two that we felt were most appropriate for Highland. Some school districts in Ulster are having either seven or nine to 12 be all virtual, um, and then spreading out elementary out from all buildings, but we, we didn't, we didn't like that.
Well, we don't have staffing.
And we don't have the staffing.
Spread the teachers out.
I don't like that, I don't like, just say, no, well, the secondary kids can handle being home alone.
Yeah, that's fine.
We talked about shifting the schedule for training for the safety, all the safety pieces, but what about training the staff?
Yes, on tech, on, online learning.
That's the biggest with the, that's the second option, that's gonna be the, you know, what's gonna give us a home run or, or not, if what happens in those, those offices. So think about having that time dedicated to that for the teachers.
That absolutely is a big part of that, because really, I think the safety part of it and our mandated stuff, we can do on one day, a lot of it is gonna be a lot more about especially, um, unifying the look of our online presence so that even though teachers will be putting different things up there, they at least are uniform and where our students can find what they need. Um, you know, that was definitely a lot of the feedback that we received. And throughout the guidance doc- document, they talk a lot about, um, I think the word is substantive contact between teacher and student. Uh, you know, those were the two primary things that we got the most negative feedback about the closer was not knowing where to find things on the online environment and then not having enough teacher-to-student contact time. So that's part of the reason that we built into that schedule be the kind of one hour in the morning or one hour in the afternoon. That also allows us time to sanitize the buses between runs too. And we don't know how mu- I mean, we didn't even really go into all the requirements of the plan, we'll probably go through that more at the next board meeting once we've submitted, but we have to do temperature and wellness checks for every person coming in the building at the beginning of the day, so that's the biggest sticking point right now, actually, is thinking about how we're going to manage that.
You know, Sarah, I think you're making a really, you've just made a really good point, because I'm picturing my, my old college life, some of my most enriching classes were smaller and where I got so much more out of it.
Sure.
And, um, I, I really think that this could be a positive thing.
And, you know, there's, and, and, you know, it's hard, it's new, it's different, so it's hard for people to wrap their heads around what that really is gonna mean or what it's really gonna look like and, you know, and since we don't really know what's going on in the rest of the world either, you know, it just makes it that much more scary, I think.
So, uh, every day, every student is gonna have their temperature taken when they're going to school?
We're working that out.
So, yeah, so, uh, we're, so there, there are, there is an app that will, that all Ulster County is, through BOCES, is, uh, going to be using. The guidance heavily pushes that they want, that for parents to do the temperature checks before they pump. The worry for many people is that just because of, you know, getting the kids out and, and that a parent could, oh, yeah, I, I did it, boom, and send it in, but they really didn't check the temperature.
They, they do that already.
Yes, yes.
So what happens?
Send them in with the note.
Maybe their bus comes in, three buses come in.
So it's, it is, so the, I don't wanna, the very possible plan, okay, is that there's 15 school buses that are out to pick up at any one time, so that if we have a monitor in every bus, we might have to hire some more part-time monitors. An adult can move around the bus while the bus is moving. So the possibility is that you'd have certain seats that would be designated as, these are the, you know, high-temperature seats.
Isolation area.
The isolation area. So the kids would come in, as they're coming in, or they'd probably come in, you'd leave the first four seats empty, they'd start, they come in, they, they quickly, it only takes a couple of seconds to take the temperature, if someone is 100 or higher, they get moved to that seat safely. So that the temperatures would all be done before they arrive into the building, because it gets tricky then if it rained, if people are waiting on huge lines to get in. You don't want them coming into the building if they haven't had their temperature taken yet. yet, so that is, our goal is to do it on the bus, and then they would log it right in, bam, so-
And then we'll have a separate four door box.
So they would do that with a forehead swipe and presumably have, had a separate license.
It'll be all electronic, we're cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, we can't keep, we can't keep students' temperatures, so all we can keep is that we checked in, they passed.
Right.
What about before they get off the bus?
Well, the, right, we talked about that the only issue is, you know, you only have the kids, it's possible, but you know, if you stopped on two ninety-nine and you have, you know, you can't be waiting there for like five minutes it might take to do all the kids' temperature.
And sometimes the touchless scanners need you, you need to do it a couple of times to get an accurate reading, to stop that.
They were doing that at West Point initially, and then they just dropped it, it just wasn't practical.
Yeah.
And, like I was saying, asymptomatic, pre-symptomatic, they don't present with fevers.
Right.
So you're, it's just, you're catching minnows in an ocean.
Yeah.
Correct. Sarah, my last question, uh, devices, with option B, the-
Oh, okay.
Student's gonna have to take a device home with them for virtual on Wednesday, and then bring it back to school on their two cohort days?
That would be the idea, with one-to-one, that's the idea, yes.
So we're gonna provide one-to-one for all?
It looks like we will be able to do that at least through ninth grade. We're, we're trying to get our laptops that we have already, um, right now, the way that they're hooked into the something with Microsoft, um, once you leave the building, they don't work, so we have our tech guys working on that, trying to figure out somehow the way they're configured through Microsoft, um, but with what we've ordered and the work they're doing now, we should be able to have every kid have a device.
Okay.
Um, the biggest thing is just making sure we get them in time, so that's, and it looks like we are.
It might take a little time, it might be rolling, but we might not have it for day one that every kid up to-
But that's, that's the picture that we have.
But at the, at the upper levels, I mean, I'm sure they're using the devices, you know, in class on a daily basis, so it's gonna be more difficult if, oh, I forgot mine at home, or, you know, now we're not sharing the device, or anything.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, we'll have to, yeah.
But the one-to-one is, in a perfect scenario, it always works.
Of course, no, I, I fully expect it, we're gonna have this whole plan and we're gonna go two days and then we're gonna have to change it, some area of it completely doesn't work, you know?
Or, it's, it's only as good as our ability to keep things fixed and up and running, and pretty soon you're gonna get inundated.
My bigger concern, actually, with technology is not so much our devices, but the access that's been established.
That's our concern, do we still have our numbers from the last, how many?
We do, you know, but, but they're going to need better access if we have every student in the build, or in their household, has a device that they're trying to log around at the same time. You know, some people's wifi may not be that robust, or if they're paying for data in some way, so that's just, you know, that's one of those things.
What were the numbers that we were dealing with over the, the last year?
Um, it was, you know, in the survey, it was about three percent, um, I think we probably had about fifteen families that had nothing, that we need to get them some sort of access.
So I'm just wondering if, if, if that's something we could look to the community to, if, if we have solid numbers, if we can't look to Rotary or something, to actually, during this time, to actually provide those people with a plan for plan.
Yeah, and, and I think the other thing that's-
Yeah, get the wifi type.
But that's kinda what we did, was, and then you couldn't get them easily either, because everyone's trying to find them, I think that's evened out a little bit now. Um, but the other part of that, too, is if you remember, Optimum and, um, Spectrum both did some level of free internet access during the, the, um, closure, I don't know that that will still be in place in September, so there, there definitely are some things that, um, we may have more, because some of the free options that were out there may not be available.
I actually wonder if we can have a, a-
Yeah, that'll be part of that, you know, transportation and online and all that, yeah.
Assistance, assistance, in getting people access.
I mean, just like the phone calls that happened on Friday, why not do the same thing where you're calling people and asking, that way, the surveys, you don't really know who's, who the families are, but at least make sure every kid is, every family is accounted for, but-
And then that's what I think, you know, I think that first, whatever, the second week in August, we'll actually be sending something to families and saying, you need to, you need to let us know a definite about transportation, a definite about whether you're coming into school or not, you know, what access you have, you know, like it'll be three or four things that would actually, we may even just end up mailing those home to families, I, yeah, I don't know, we gotta think about that a little bit more, but, um, yes, I think it's gonna have to be one-on-one. The hard thing was the phone calls home for the transportation this week, it, it was not, um, quick, should I say it that way, Marion? I mean, it was-
We had a lot of messages.
And we had a lot of messages, and so, we're getting data, but it's, it's not, again, one of those systems that I thought would be, this is great, we're gonna, you know, we'll have a really good number, and it's, we have some numbers, but it's not as, uh, straightforward as I thought it might be. I mean, it has been good, though, because we found some things where we don't have the number that, you know, goes anywhere, and, you know, doing a few of those kinds of, you know, sort of deals, but.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right, I don't think we need a resolution.
No, you don't need a resolution.
Just gonna do consensus of option A or B, and that will be our plan submitted to the state on Thursday. All right, it's Friday. So Heather, you wanna start?
Um, I think I go with option B. Um, I understand the concern of having, you know, cohort one the first half of the week, cohort two in the second half of the week, but I do like that for safety purposes. Obviously, I think that's better than option A because of the safety purposes, so I would look to keep it the way it is, you know, set up, but option B would be my preference.
Okay, I prefer option B for the health and safety primarily, and I think academically, I think it could be adapted. I was really impressed with how our staff handled the remote learning, and I think, given the, the, the knowledge, I think they can instruct so that there is, I, I think they can keep a weekly contact time through all their students, but while maintaining the safety of option B.
Yeah, option B would just believe is, is the best plan, so provided that, like I said, the update, the, the updates is, is structured and consistent, you know, that was, that was my concern as a, as a parent, seeing, it was just saying, you know, it was provided to kids at middle school and high school, so that for me, if we can kinda get that a little, a little more down, you know, a little more solid, then I would, I'm definitely would be.
Option B, uh, and I also really like Gal's idea, uh, with cohort one on a Monday and cohort two on Tuesday, I think that would be better to eliminate the lag with face-to-face.
Right.
Okay, I, I'm gonna go with option B also, um, I, I really like the daily interaction that option, option A offers, but, um, it's just not realistic. B would be the better choice, I just fear with B, my only concern is there's gonna be students that are gonna get lost, um, not lost out there, but just lost and not tracked properly in the system due to home life and whatever else is going on, um, that's my biggest concern, and there's big stretches of time where these kids are gonna just lose and they're gonna kind of go off, off the grid, kind of away from any attention, that's the big part, whatever wants, uh, um, option B.
All right, I, I'd also prefer option B, uh, and, and I hear what you're saying, Tom, I, you know, you're, you got a lot of downtime for some of those kids that is not beneficial to them, but the other thing I like, what Sarah and Sue alluded to, is that, uh, as a silver lining, the teachers have more time with a smaller group, and hopefully, uh, those at risk and those that might be falling through the cracks will be able to grab those students and, uh, spend more time with them on a, on a more individual sense, so I, I kinda like option B. So, I think your consensus is option B.
Okay.
Can I ask, like, the mask, like, how are we looking at masks, we have to provide masks for, on the buses if they don't have it?
So we, we, we have a stockpile of masks now, and we have orders in, I mean, we have enough to start the year, so every, every classroom, every office, every bus will have spare masks for people who don't have a mask, but, you know, we've ordered, you know, just the masks, you know, it's, you know, like, it's like fifty thousand dollars for that, so maybe gets it through half a year.
What about the front raised or, the ETA front raised or husky masks?
Yeah.
Uh, I think one of the schools was doing something, I, my mom actually saw it, I don't know how it went down.
The high school was, the high school PTA is doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I do think that most parents, and I would say probably most teachers are gonna be supplying their own, um, just 'cause I'd rather, but not all, so-
Not all.
You know, and again, things happen during the day to make them gross, so.
Well, we have to be prepared, have masks for everyone, and, you know, that'd be, if you're giving out disposable masks, but that's a new mask every day, or maybe multiple times in the same day, depending on the child.
Husky masks.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're doing now.
I'm seeing it all.
Yeah.
Both of us.
Do they come inside, like, for kindergarten kids?
Yes.
There's kid sizes.
There's kid sizes and adult sizes.
I don't have any little kids anymore, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Yes, and we also have a supply of, um, face shields for our nurses, actually, our nurse PPE, I think we're pretty well set, we've gotten a lot of N ninety-five masks, good PPE, bounds, gloves, all that, um, so, and right now, the, the barriers are quite-
We've got a lot of this stuff.
Got a lot of that.
Yes.
Well, that is one of the things, we have to have the same attention in every classroom.
New York State.
It won't be that.
I don't like that.
I like that stuff, yeah. Okay. All right.
So, uh-
That ends our special presentation.
That ends the special presentation, um, before we go into executive, anybody have any other questions, concerns? Okay, uh, oh.
Mark, is that a quick question, on the schedule for the, on plan B, the high school's a normal start time for the high school and middle school is what time?
So, we're not exactly sure yet, but, uh, the normal time would be seven forty-ish, seven thirty-five, seven forty on, on old times, um, so we're looking, actually, no, they would still start at that time, so around seven thirty-five, seven forty.
And then the forty-five minutes early, would put it where?
At about-
One.
One, somewhere between one thirty and one forty-five.
Right. And then, with the elementary school authorized, one hour later, what is that?
They'd be arriving around between nine thirty and ten.
Yeah.
Nine thirty and ten, and then dismiss at normal time, which is?
Three to three fifteen.
Between three and three thirty, yeah.
Three, three fifteen?
Yeah.
I have one other question, um, the next thing about the executive session, can I ask a question as to what part of the open meetings law you're facing, adding executive, because I hadn't read anything in there that talked about, when you're talking about a plan or a policy.
We're actually doing an interview and then speaking about compensation on individuals that might be hired by the district to put an action plan together.
Oh, I see. But the actual plan-
The plan is not going to be discussed in executive session.